Hello, everybody. It is 6:00 PM on Tuesday, May 6th, and we will call to order the special meeting of the Corte Madera Town Council. We'll be retiring into closed sessions shortly, but if we could start with a roll call, please.
Councilmember Andrews. Councilmember Beckman. Is running late, sorry. Councilmember Casiza.
Here.
Vice Mayor Thomas.
Here.
Mayor Rivasio.
Here. And now, could you join me in pledge of allegiance? Okay, well, we accomplished that just barely. So I think now we just adjourn to closed session and... Sorry? Oh, is there any public comment about our upcoming closed session meeting? Seeing none in the room?
We don't have any attendees online, and we didn't receive emailed public comment for the closed session item.
Okay, so we'll retire adjourn to closed session. Okay, thank you all very much for your patience. We have just met in closed session and have nothing to report. So we will adjourn that meeting and then call to order the Tuesday, May 6th, regular town council meeting. We have already done a pledge to the legions of the flag, but we, I guess, should start with a roll call.
Councilmember Andrews. Councilmember Beckman.
Here.
Councilmember Casiza.
Here.
Vice Mayor Thomas.
Here.
Mayor Rivasio.
Here. Now, we open up for time for public comment. Any member of the public may address the town council concerning any item not on the council's agenda tonight. Speakers will be limited to three minutes unless otherwise specified. So we do have a valiant, brave volunteer at the microphone, so please go right ahead.
Good evening. My name is Margaret Bandell, and I live at 180 Prince Royal Drive in Corte Madera. My house faces 159 Prince Royal Drive. The Planning Commission and then the town council approved the plan for this major remodel, which was actually a tear down and build of a 3,371-square-foot, three-story home on May 16th of 2017. Building did not begin, and the permit lapsed twice. And then, the planning director at the time allowed a subjective third-year extension in July of 2020. The home is still not near completion. And in the meantime, there's also a three-bedroom, two-bath ADU on the site. I've been subjected to the uncertainty of this site since the initial Planning Council Study Session Request in 2016, almost 10 years ago. My neighbors and I have had to look at this building site and have been subjected to the turmoil, excavation, cranes, trucks, noise, parking, mud, and mess, deliveries, and more, now for more than five years. And it continues to this day. It's not near completion. I've tried a number of times to suggest to the town that the town consider rules and regulations for the timeline allowed for building after a permit is granted, some objective rules that would take into consideration people in the neighborhood, not just the applicant. And I've been told that there are other things taking priority. Well, I think that after 10 years, the time has come for this to be a priority. We need some kind of timeline and rules. It's time to consider the people of a neighborhood and consider them as a priority. Think about this. The White House took only eight years to complete, and the completed town hall that you sit in today took only one-third of the time that this neighborhood I saw continues to claim. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments and concerns. I'm sure there will be some response from staff at some point. Is there anyone else in the audience here today who would like to say something? And if not, is there anybody online?
We do not have any hands raised from our attendees online, and we didn't receive any emailed public comment for open time.
Okay, so I will close the open time for public comment. And next, we have a presentation by Chris Logan, the county of Marin, on the Rooted in Marin's Anti-Displacement Effort. And you do not look like Chris Logan, but...
Good evening, Mayor Rivasio. Members of the council. Amy Lio, Community Development Director. I just wanted to give a brief introduction. We do have Chris Logan here tonight, and we also have Jillian Ziegler from the county of Marin. And I wanted to recognize Jillian because she is leading our housing collaborative here in the county. And it's something we don't recognize a lot, but it's incredibly powerful to the work we do in Corte Madera and then throughout the county. But it's supported by a bag... Is it Regional Early Action Planning Grant, REAP Grant? And what it does is it allows the counties to convene all the jurisdictions to work on housing efforts together. And so Jillian's been supporting this group for a number of years through the Housing Element process. And now, we're all in implementation phase. And this work really came out of the implementation, knowing that we're all working on very similar policies and need the alignment. And so, the report that Chris is going to report out on is really a manifestation of this alignment with all the jurisdictions. And this report has been getting a lot of great press, and we're happy to have him here tonight to present this to you. And with that, I'll turn it over to Chris.
Thank you, Amy.
Evening, everyone. My name is Chris Logan, and I am the Partnership for Bay Future Fellow with the Community Development Agency at Marin County. And part of my role is to help both with the implementation of the results of this report, but also to deepen our ability to connect with the community. And so, I spend a lot of my time connecting with community members around exactly what's needed and where and where to focus our time. So I'll share a little bit about the results of that. You can get the next slide, please. But just so you know, the purpose of the Rooted in Marin Report was a community-centered initiative aimed at understanding displacement when residents are involuntarily forced to leave their homes or neighborhoods due to circumstances beyond their control. It's a part of the collaborative effort, as Amy mentioned, to implement the Housing Elements Policies with the cities, town, and the county. Next slide. And you can hit the next slide. That's just... That's the housing for the county. But I want to focus in on some of the context for Corte Madera, looking at your Housing Element. These are some of the policies that you are committed to considering during this Housing Element cycle, which include rent stabilization, just cost, relocation assistance, the right to purchase or return, and the tenant bill of rights. Next slide. So I wanted to share about this slide. And so, I'll explain this graph. It can be kind of hard to understand and read. But the blue line represents households that make above the median income. And so, those are moderate and high-income households. The red line represents those who are low-income and below. And then, that dotted line that you see throughout it is the average overall. And so, looking at Marin County at a whole, we've realized that we've lost about 18 people per 1,000 people between 2010 and 2023. And while we've attracted about five people per 1,000 from the moderate and high-income category, we've lost about 33 per 1,000 in the low-income category. And so, it's becoming increasingly hard for people who don't make moderate and high income to live in our county. And often, these are people who do, who work for us, who do the work at the grocery stores, work at the restaurants, but they just can't quite make that income to afford to live here. Next slide. Oh, and that's just an expansion of the graph. You get the next slide, please. So some of the key findings that we found is that about 64% of the workforce of Marin actually lives outside of the county. Many of them commute. We're also kind of in a Zoom online era, and so some of them will Zoom into work. And 42% of the population of Marin is low-income. And we see that Black and Latino residents are overrepresented in those categories, 75% Black and 61% Latino. This, next slide. Marin County happens to have the third-highest median rental rate, both in the Bay Area and in the state. 60% of Marin rental households are rent burdened, and 50% of older adults are financially burdened. And that's according to the report put out by the Area Agency on Aging. Next slide. I want to explain this graph. So if you look at the X, the bottom axis, you'll see that those are the different income categories. And then, if you look at the blue and the orange section, that represents the population of people who are rent burdened. And when we say rent burden, we mean that people who are paying more than 30% of their income in order to live. And this is in Corte Madera. This comes from your Housing Element. And so, we see that the low-income group, about 73% of that population is rent burdened. The very low-income group is 79% of that population. And the extremely low-income group is 94%. That population is rent burdened. And again, these are people who do our work. Often, what we also found in my time in the community is that a lot of people who are aging and older adults on fixed incomes, they also face a huge threat of displacement, being uprooted from their community and the support systems that they've created over time. Next slide. And so, some of the key takeaways. Marin faces loss of economic opportunity, increasing inequality due to this housing crisis. Marin needs diverse housing and transportation solutions for all. And implementing the policies that are outlined in your Housing Element may address the disparities that exist within our county. Next slide. So I just want to briefly describe some of the community engagement that we did for this report. We had 16 members of our advisory committee. Those included renters, landlords, service providers, developers, realtors, and business owners. And I'm continually being in conversation with them about the ongoing implementation about the report to make sure that we're trying to bring as many people on board as possible. We also had several focus groups, and those included employees who've been displaced, families with children, rent-burdened households, seniors and people with disabilities, tenant association organizers, unhoused residents, business owners, realtors, and small landlords. And some of the findings, just really quickly, is that from the renters, we find that the financial pressure from unexpected fixed and variable costs was just really overwhelming for many of them. And many of them have to choose between paying the rent and paying for other necessities for the household. We also find from the landlords and businesses the difficulty to operate business due to the rising costs of housing because it's harder to pay employees enough to live in our county because of the rental prices are so high. Some of the shared concerns that we have from landlords and renters was the lack of accessible information about rental laws. They value the renter and landlord relationships and effective communication. Some of the shared consequences are of the consequence of displacement, community and family instability, loss of diversity, the poor health effects that rent burden can cause for a household, the longer commutes, and the homelessness risk. Next slide. So after the report was done, we had a period of community briefings, and this was done in partnership with our community partner, Community Action Marin. And we were at West Marin, the Marin City Senior Center, North Marin Community Services, Canal Alliance. And we also were online. And this was all an effort, again, just to gain people's feedback on the report and also just know where the greatest need is and how to support renters. Next slide. And so, here's some of the results. And so, we did kind of a brief straw poll from this effort. And what we found is that the top three things that came up were people as it relates to what we could do to support renters are number one, rent stabilization; number two, access to legal support; and number three, and this was actually a surprise to many of us, was the living conditions that people were living in. They found it hard to live in those apartment complexes. Next slide. And so, I just briefly go over some of the policy options that are available. Get the next slide. An inter-jurisdictional rental registry. And so, this is something that we've heard from the housing collaborative that's throughout the county. But I'll briefly describe what it is. A rental registry would enable local jurisdictions to collect data needed to have accurate information about the current housing stock. It can also serve as an enforcement mechanism for policies associated with rentals. Many of the jurisdictions in our county are actually interested in having a shared rental registry. They often find that administering and managing the rental registry with minimal staff capacity could be a burden, but if we pool our resources, we could actually do this. And again, a lot of the data that we were able to collect was from third-party sources. And we think it'd be really great if we could have our own data that's generated by the landlords. Next slide. So here's some things that we could do to address the living conditions. One is proactive code enforcement, where inspections are conducted on a periodic schedule and do not rely on tenants' comfort in making a complaint. Most of our jurisdictions are on a complaint-based system. And many times, tenants are afraid of retaliation or harassment from their landlord if they make a complaint or that their rent will be raised as a result. And so, if we're able to do a periodic check on that, that takes the stress off the renter. There's also the tenant habitability plan, where a landlord will submit an explanation of what they're going to do. And so, this is in the event that they have to do some major repairs or renovations, how it will impact their tenant's ability to stay in place, and what they will do to support tenants in the meantime. Next slide. We also have relocation assistance. Relocation assistance includes financial support and other resources provided to the tenant due to no-fault evictions. And so, renovations will be one of those no-fault evictions. Some of the best practices for the relocation assistance is that when there are substantial renovations or cold concerns, property owners are the ones who are responsible for paying that relocation cost. And the preference is that they actually pay those costs at cost. We're currently in a situation in Novato where we're having to house tenants in a hotel. And that's significantly more expensive than the rental rate. And so, being able to reimburse the tenants at cost is huge here. And then, also, to give the tenants an option to relocate after 30 days of displacement with a large payout by the landlord. We've also found across the state of California that sometimes landlords will drag out this process long in an effort to actually kind of, you know, move, have the tenant choose to move and have some other things happen on the property. And so, if we do this within 30 days, that will help them speed the process up. Next slide. We have the right to return. So the tenant right to return refers to a tenant's right to return to the rental unit after it has been temporarily vacated, usually from renovations or redevelopment. We often want that right to return to be at the same cost of rent because we don't want that tenant to come back and then they have to pay double the rent as a result of those renovations. Next slide. We have rent stabilization. And this is often referred to as rent control. And it limits how much landlords can increase the rents annually. We do have a state rent control law that is 5% plus the CPI. And so, this year in Marin County, that's 8.8%. It only comes into effect after a tenant's been in place for about a year. And so, what a local jurisdiction can do is they can do something as simple as saying that that rent stabilization comes into effect once they move in. They could also lower that rent cap according to the jurisdiction's needs. And next slide. Legal support, again, was one of those top concerns. We find that about 90% of landlords are represented when there's an unlawful detainer or an eviction case, whereas 10% of tenants are represented when there's an eviction case. And that is a huge information disparity. And oftentimes, tenants don't know about all the laws that protect them when there's an eviction. And so, here's two ways that we find could be helpful. The first is the landlord and tenant dispute resolution. We have something similar to this in the unincorporated areas of the county. And it requires tenants and landlords to go through a non-binding mediation process under certain conditions. And then, the second option is a right to counsel, which gives the residents a right to full-scope legal representation when there is an eviction case. It's kind of similar to a criminal case where they have the right to a public defender. Next slide. And so, just some next steps for us to consider. You know, consider the policies that are in your housing elements. There are also quite a few policies that you may consider that are not listed in your housing element that can meet Corte Madera's needs. You could also consider developing an implementation plan as well as focusing on education outreach of the community so they know exactly how these policies will affect them. And I believe that is my presentation.
Thank you so much for a very articulate and concise presentation of both the situation and some suggested actions for us to take. Are there questions from the council? Yes, Jim?
Yes. I vaguely recall that there's a Texas software firm that collects rental data and then makes recommendations to landlords as to what sort of rent they should charge and whether they should leave units vacant to keep the market tight. And I believe they've been sued for anti-trust by the feds, but I'm not certain on that. What do you know about it? And are any of the local jurisdictions or counties coming up with a ordinance to deal with the use of that software?
Yeah, that's a great question. I did not do extensive research on this point, but I do know that it does exist, that people are using or companies are using AI models to kind of inform landlords about what rent they should charge and where. And that's actually having an adverse effect on the market rental rates. I do know that there are actions that the local jurisdiction can take in order to limit the ability of the companies to do that within the jurisdiction. And we could definitely look into more into how Corte Madera can look.
Or if we set up a rental registry, require the landlords to list the software they're using.
Absolutely, definitely, we could do that.
Anything more, Jim? Anyone else have questions? Yeah, Rosa?
Thank you for the presentation. There's a couple of really interesting things that you mentioned, and I'm just wondering how it's playing out in practice. The right of renters to return to a property that's been improved at the previous rental price. I can see that, you know, landlords would say, now that I've sunk all this money into it, I have to recoup. So how is that playing out in reality?
Yeah, I mean, I think that one thing that is a state law is that landlords do have a right to a reasonable return for their investment. So something that we want to keep in mind with all these policies. One of the things that we're looking into is a way to support small landlords. And then, also, so we're thinking about either grants or low-interest loans. Again, this is very much in the planning phase. But also, if we're going to give the landlord that option, we want to have an agreement with that landlord that says, you're not going to double-dip. You know, you're going to get this grant money, but let's cap the rent at a certain percentage for the next period of time so that we can keep the rents at cost. I think that the local jurisdiction can also put into its code that in the event that there is a situation where there has to be a vacation of the units, that they cannot raise their rent as well.
Okay, on previous tenants only.
Exactly, exactly.
Okay. And then, I was interested in this concept of a public defender for renters, in a sense. And how's that financed? Is that through some local nonprofit? Or how is that taken care of?
Yeah, so typically, we find that that's being financed by the public, by public money. Oftentimes, a city or a jurisdiction will enact a new tax or a bond to finance that piece of it. The financing is a big piece of it. I believe in San Francisco, for their right to counsel, it's about $13 million to finance the amount of lawyers that are needed to meet the need because there is a huge need. Yeah, usually, it's a public money through a special fund that's created.
Okay, thank you. Those are my questions. Right?
Yeah, thanks for the presentation. Great job. Just one question. On older adults, do you see that as a growing population becoming more and more financially burdened, especially since I know Marin County in general, that population is growing?
Absolutely. So I did check your Housing Element. I do know that in Corte Madera, it's increased. The median age has increased from 40 to 45 in a certain period of time. And it's increasing, as you know, in the entire county. And having met with a lot of people in the Elder Advisory Council, the Area Agency on Aging, a lot of those individuals are having a hard time paying their rent. And they're also having a hard time with accessibility. And so, as they age, they need different accommodations. And of course, that leads into, well, do I ask my landlord for that? And will my rent increase? So it all kind of folds into this compounding problem. But yes, we are finding that aging adults are more cost-burdened.
Okay, thanks. And one more question on the legal side, just to follow what Rosa said. Do you ever get law firms in Marin that do pro bono-type work that would help people in this situation?
Yeah, so I do know that Legal A.L. Marin is supporting renters, and they are, you know, financed by philanthropy. And so, that's a big resource. One thing I would add is after talking to a lot of the people who work there is that they're at capacity, beyond capacity. And so, we're currently, again, we're working with them on this case in Novato. And we're trying to figure out, how can we support the tenants? And they were really clear with us that they don't have the staff to really meet that need. So we're looking at other resources. And so, as we were saying earlier, we're going to have to find some money if we want to do a right to counsel in order to make sure that we can have lawyers who can afford to work here, afford to live here, to service the tenants that need it.
Okay, thanks. It shows you it's a growing problem if they're tapped out and they're at capacity.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thanks, Kim, for the presentation.
Thank you. Thank you very much for the presentation. And I want to thank Councilmember Andrews for his question about these rental algorithms that we're seeing pop up because I think that is a huge concern in the way that it's allowing landlords to function as a cartel in the economic sense. Few other questions from me. First of all, just to clarify, did you say that in the first year that a renter is renting, landlords are not subject to the statewide rent cap so they can raise the rent as much as they want in the first year?
That's correct. AB4282, yes.
I can shed some light on the rental algorithm if it's helpful.
Would love that.
Yes. So the Attorney General has sued under antitrust. RealPage, which is one of these entities that does this, suing under antitrust, and they're...
Is it U.S. or the state attorney?
A state attorney general. It says it joins the U.S. Department of Justice. My guess is they're... Well, I don't know if they'll continue to. But the state is definitely suing. And Attorneys General of Colorado, Connecticut, Illinois, Massachusetts, Minnesota, North Carolina, Oregon, Tennessee, and Washington are also suing.
Thank you very much. And thank you for your answer as well to my other question. Couple more. One, do you... Want, do we collect data on displacement in Corder Madera?
Yes, we do. Yeah, yeah, I don't have access to that data at hand, but we do list it in your housing element.
Okay, wonderful. Excellent. And then how would one expect a new affordable housing development in Corder Madera to impact displacement in Corder Madera?
I mean, it's going to be huge. Obviously, I think that as we look at, you know, there was the graph, I don't know if we can put the graph up again. We have a huge population of people who are fall into the low income category. And again, they've set up roots here, their kids go to school here, they're elderly and they have their family here. And so not only will it have this kind of this macro effect on displacement, but it'll also have an impact on individuals that a lot of us in this room know and care about.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Just one question for me at this point. Can you tell me if any of our neighboring communities, Larkspur, Mill Valley, San Rafael, Tiburon, have they made any progress in in these areas?
We're just at the beginning of stages of it. And so we're really exploring part of this process or part of this phase in the process is to go to different town councils and city councils to gather their feedback so that we can go back to the drawing board and know how to support the different planning directors in each jurisdiction.
Okay. And then actually one more. These things like proactive code enforcement and things that will cost money for the town to implement. Are there funds available to support those activities? Or is it some, is it a resource that we would be looked to to come up with?
Yeah, I would answer that question in this way. I don't believe that there's any funds available at this point. Of course, Julie and I can look into that. But I'd also say that common practice is that it's actually a charge that's a nominal fee to the landlord or property owner in the event that they're doing the code enforcement. That's very common across the Bay Area and the state of California. And so I would explore looking at some nominal fees that could help cover those costs.
Okay. All right, with that, no more questions from council. I open it up to the public in the room. If anybody has any questions or comments about this matter, step on up to the microphone. Not seeing anybody, is there anybody online waiting?
No hands raised from attendees online and no email public comment for this item.
Okay, so we're not required to take any action on this, but are there any final comments? Any comments from council? One comment?
One thing I'd like to see is they create the rental registry, but also be able to compare it to the various ADUs that are authorizing. Make certain that they're actually meeting our needs of providing housing for people as opposed to other uses for them.
That's good.
I think, you know, I think the idea of the registry is reasonable within our town, but we, it'd be great if we could have all the towns choose the same criteria.
And that would be my closing comment, too, is that some collaboration between the communities on some of these things might actually make them more feasible. Corder Madera is a very small town. I know we look like we're this big metropolis with this beautiful town hall, but we're only 10,000 people. And when we go to Cal Cities events, it's like we're sitting at the kids table. I mean, the big cities are making big programs and a lot of times we just don't have the resources to do that. So countywide or some collaboration, I think, would really help us step up the way we'd like to. My feeling, okay. Thank you so much. Oh, and we haven't heard from you.
So it's really helpful to hear about the collaboration because we meet regularly to collaborate. And I think what we'll probably do is after we meet with all of the cities and towns, we'll figure out, you know, which policies everyone is interested in collaborating on together. But we've already heard from jurisdictions who are interested in the rental registry. And that's something that if we do it together, the price per unit, et cetera, it's going to be more financially feasible. I want to mention one more thing about legal aid. It's that the county and we also have federal funds that support that work. So, you know, if we think about funds from jurisdictions, if we pull them together and add additional county dollars, we could potentially have more attorneys, et cetera, to to help defend tenants. Thanks.
Thank you, thanks very much. Anything else on that? Okay, then we can move on to the consent calendar. The purpose of the consent calendar is to group items together which are routine or have been discussed previously and don't require further discussion. They will be approved by a single motion. Anyone in the public may comment on the consent calendar or pull something off, as can town council, town staff, or the public. So is there anything that somebody would like to pull off the?
I'd like to remove item four E, please.
Okay, anybody else wanting to remove anything from the consent calendar? Okay, so I guess we can go ahead and vote on four A, four B, four C, four D, four F, and four G, if I can get a motion.
I'll go make the motion.
First, I just want to say we didn't receive emailed public comment for those consent items or any requests from the public to remove any items from the consent calendar. And at this time, there are no hands raised from attendees on Zoom.
Okay, and also nobody in the room wanting to pull anything off? All right. So we'll go ahead with that motion again?
Yes, I can make the motion.
Have a second?
Second.
Okay, Councilmember Andrews?
Yes.
Councilmember Beckman?
Yes.
Councilmember Casissa?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
Mayor Rivasio?
Yes.
Thank you, the motion carries.
Okay, so let's take up four E, Rosa.
Seeing that it's, after reviewing the desires and specific needs of the town manager and in reviewing his review, I'd like to remove four E so that we are not going to approve the amount of fifteen thousand dollars for a facilitated performance evaluation process.
We're basically tabling it for a while.
Yeah, move to table. Yeah. Yeah, you can move to table it, which just takes it off calendar.
Is there anyone else who would like to discuss this matter before we?
Yeah, or you're waiting for me to say either to table or to or make a motion to deny or make a motion to table?
Well, I mean, you can discuss the item first.
Okay.
Or you can move and get a second. It depends on if council wants discussion before the motion.
Would the council prefer to discuss before I make a motion? Or do you want to know what motion I would make?
Would you want to make a motion to just vote no?
I would make a motion to just deny.
Second.
Okay.
After public comment.
Okay, and now is there any comment from the, can we go to public first for comment? Is there any comment from the public regarding this matter, either in the room or online?
I don't see any hands raised online and no email public comment either.
Okay, let's bring it back to the council for discussion. Is there anybody who wants to talk about this before we take a vote?
I'd prefer we just table it so that if the issue comes up in the future, not distant future, but you know, near future, we can bring it back up and discuss it.
Any concerns one way or the other? Are you okay with that, Rosa, or do you want to stick with your straight denial?
I will accept tabling it. Okay, okay, because I'm a weenie.
Anything else before we vote?
So Rosa has accepted Jim's friendly amendment and I will second the motion.
Okay, and and I would just like to say, I know that this might be baffling to people who don't understand what we're doing and why. But I think it is just that we had at one point gotten very enthusiastic about doing a big elaborate review. And in conversation, since we had that conversation, we've sort of realized that we really don't need to do that. And we also don't need to do it now. So we're taking a step back, saving the town fifteen grand or somewhere along there. We'll still be having Amy do some help with us. But we are thinking that we're doing the right thing by saving money and not doing something that doesn't feel necessary at this time. So with that, I do support this vote. Do we, can we get a vote?
Councilmember Andrews? Councilmember Beckman?
Yes.
Councilmember Casissa?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
Mayor Rivasio?
Yes.
Thank you, the motion carries.
Okay, we'll move on to public hearing five A. First reading and possible introduction of an ordinance adding section fifteen oh two oh three five to chapter fifteen oh two, the fire code, to designate a moderate fire hazard severity zone in Corder Madera. And so we will be conducting a public hearing to introduce the ordinance as required. And I believe we have staff report and then a representative Chris Guile?
Chris Jewell.
Jewell from our fire department. So Adam, you want to start?
Yeah, thank you, Adam Mayor and council members. Unfortunately, while the staff report was written by our fire chief, Ruben Martin, he's unfortunately ill today and is not able to attend. So myself and Chris Jewell, our fire inspector, are going to tag team this one together to hopefully answer all your questions. And I'm gonna, we'll take it from there. But this is a fairly straightforward item. As you mentioned, this is an introduction of an ordinance and conducting the first reading, adding section fifteen oh two oh three five to chapter fifteen oh two, which is our fire code, to designate a moderate fire hazard severity zone in the town of Corder Madera's local responsibility area. If introduced this evening, the second reading and adoption of the proposed ordinance will follow at the next town council meeting on May twentieth. Behind me is the official map from CAL FIRE. And I'll like to go into a little bit of background before talking specifically how this affects Corder Madera. So in 2021, CAL FIRE was required by state law to identify moderate, high and very high fire hazard severity zones in local responsibility areas. These are areas where local jurisdictions, rather than the state or federal government, have primary responsibility for wildfire protection. These maps are created by CAL FIRE under the direction of state fire marshal. And they're really, there's not local jurisdictional input. They're just, they they do the work and they provide these maps to local jurisdictions. The maps for the Bay Area were published on February twenty fourth, 2025. And California Government Code Section five one one seven nine A mandates that local agencies shall designate by ordinance these high, these fire hazard severity zones in their jurisdictions within 120 days of receiving recommendations from the state fire marshal. So again, that's from February twenty fourth. The maps are developed using a science-based and field-tested model that assigns a hazard score based on the factors that influence fire likelihood and fire behavior. Fire hazard severity model for wildland fire has two key elements. These are probability of an area burning and expected fire behavior under extreme fuel and weather conditions. So they factor in many factors are considered, fire history, existing and potential fuel, natural vegetation, predicted flame length, blowing embers, terrain, typical fire weather for an area. The fire hazard severity zone maps reflect hazards, not risk. And so the map is sort of like our flood maps, which don't necessarily account for our physical infrastructure that we built, such as our berms in Corder Madera at least. But they're they're really describing in terms of probability level of a particular area being inundated or in the case of fires being, having a fire start. Hazard is based on the physical conditions that create a likelihood and expected fire behavior over a thirty to fifty year period without considering this important mitigation measures such as home hardening or fuel reduction efforts. So the new maps, which now designate, the ones that that just came out, they now designate a significant portion of the town within the moderate fire hazard severity zone, which is the color yellow that you can see on that map. It requires that property owners within this moderate designation comply with defensible space and vegetation management requirements and use ignition resistant construction materials for both new construction and certain remodels. And that's Article seven A of our building code. So however, I think this goes back to the sort of the foresight of our Corder Madera Fire Department and other fire departments in Marin County. The vast majority of property owners in these moderate fire hazard severity zones are already required to comply with these same wildfire mitigation regulations. In 2008, the town adopted the Wildland Urban Interface, the WUI, as we we all know, the call it the WUI maps in 2008. And the defensible space and construction codes that are now also required as part of this moderate fire hazard severity zone. They've already been required for a number of years and continue to be updated along with our building code every three years. So there really will be no change for the vast majority of property owners in Corder Madera with this adoption of these maps. I will say the moderate zone, however, will now apply to fifty-six. And we can maybe use the, we have another map that Chris put together and Chris can speak to this in more detail. So this is a map showing in purple our old WUI designation in our WUI maps. And then sort of the orange, yellowish color, mustard color shows the, where the moderate fire hazard severity zones sort of extend beyond the WUI maps. So that moderate zone will now apply to fifty-six parcels that were not previously in the WUI. And so new regulations will apply to those properties. And they're shown again in the map. They're they're generally include portions of north of Tamalpais Drive, Paradise Drive, Coke Road, Metta Suite Drive. So just a brief summary, new maps came out in February. We have to adopt an ordinance in the maps within 120 days by state law. There's little effect for the vast majority of property owners. Fifty-six parcels will now be required to comply with defensible space and fire resistant construction codes. And that's, that's really it with this presentation from from my end. And Chris, please, if you want to add anything, let's go ahead.
Yeah, that pretty much sums up the effect to the community, fifty-six additional parcels. I believe half of those are commercial, the rest are residential. And a few of those are actually empty parcels. So unless they decide to develop, they wouldn't be held to the requirements of Chapter seven A and Chapter forty-nine in the park. Say there were, we followed the public noticing requirements per the state law that were required of us. So with that, we're available for questions from the council.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there questions from council? Go ahead, Jim?
Are we going to have to revisit our WUI maps so that they correspond with one another? Would it make sense to do that?
We are planning to adopt a newer version of the WUI maps this year with the code adoption cycle. However, currently, since the same requirements apply to both the moderate hazards severity zones and the Wildland Urban Interface, we don't see the point of adopting it into the current WUI maps when we're going to do it later in the year.
And how often does the state update these maps so that?
It depends typically, it follows an event of some sort. So initially, when the LRA maps were produced, they only showed very high fire hazard severity zones. I believe that was in nineteen ninety-two after the Oakland Hills fire. They were revised again in 2006 and again in 2011. And this adoption, they're just adding moderate and high fire hazards.
Thank you.
What else? Yes. I was wondering, does?
I was wondering, does fire have something to do with the construction codes, new construction codes? Or is that only, that would be building and planning? So when, what I'm getting at is so does fire only deal with, you know, defensible space and vegetation and all of that? Or is there also an overlay, an element of what, how you can construct new buildings or make additions?
So there are certain requirements from the fire code for access to water supply. One, for example, is the width of a driveway. So say if you do a new development for a single-family home and you're in the wildland urban interface or moderate hazard severity zone, you're required to have a 16-foot driveway versus a 12-foot driveway. The reason being is that so we can back an engine into that driveway, deploy hose lines around if there is a wildland fire in the area. The rest of the requirements, larger requirements come from 7A in the building code. And most of the other requirements from the fire code are strictly for vegetation.
Thank you. And if I could just add that every three years, the State Buildings Commission updates the building codes. And while they're called the building codes, that also means fire, electric, plumbing, green energy and WUI. And this year, they're actually going to revise the whole international WUI. It's going to be, everything's going to be in one place, which I think is going to be really useful. So we're on, we're in a three-year cycle. So it should be coming in the fall to council.
Okay, any questions down here, Fred?
I know there's a lot of concerns about insurance, fire insurance. Does this affect fire insurance at all?
That's going to be up to the purview of the insurance companies. I know through this development of the maps, as well as the upcoming Zone Zero ordinance, the IBHS is working with a lot of the insurance companies on this. And I'm sure they're working collaboratively to come up with some type of plan. So they do not drop residents as often. But that's still yet to come.
Okay. Sorry, what was, what was IBHS?
It's the International Building and Housing.
Thank you.
So theoretically, those 56 homes or so, even though some may be commercial that weren't in are now in.
Yeah.
They may be affected more than some of the other ones.
Yeah, and that's only if they decide to either redevelop, tear down, rebuild, or do certain modifications that affect a certain percentage of the home.
Okay. And then on that one map, I don't know if Lorraine can bring it back up, the first one. It, it doesn't look like any part of Cordermadera is in a very high area. It looks like it's all moderate.
That, that's correct. The only very high fire hazard severity zones we have are in Larkspur. And there's only three courses.
Okay. And then just one last question, because I know on this, on that, that map, some of it's grayed out. But it looks like Tiburon, Mill Valley and Larkspur are all moderate type areas also, right?
Yes.
Those areas are all extended out. Okay.
Yeah, and the gray areas are just the non-designated areas.
All right, thanks.
My colleagues asked all my questions, so clearly I'm on the right track.
And I've had my questions answered also. So let's turn to the public and see if we have any public comments or questions. And if not, then we'll look online.
We do have a hand raised from Peter Chase.
Peter, you can go ahead, unmute yourself.
Thank you. I'm just wanting to know, further answering the question about insurance, what will the insurance companies do to your knowledge with this information? Are they looking for this information to re-designate at-risk homes? It sounds like it's not quite clear what's going to happen next with the insurance companies. Do they look for this to drop people? What can you tell us about what will happen with the insurance industry and this new map? Thank you.
Who'd like to take that one?
I, I could start. I mean, I, I think it shouldn't affect. I mean, I'm reading from a CAL FIRE, their FAQs. They have, are trying to address this with, when they publish these maps. But really, the insurance companies, they're using risk models, which are different than the hazard models that are used to prepare these maps. And the risk models consider susceptibility of a structure to damage from fire and other short-term factors that are not included in hazard modeling. Essentially, they have their, they have a very complex algorithm of, of things and factors that they consider and criteria that they consider, which almost, in many cases such as this, they're already factoring in this information into, as a piece or a criteria, into insurance that they would be providing to these properties, even if they weren't in these, even if they weren't in the WUI before or did moderate fire hazard severity zones before. That's, that's our understanding of, and official response from CAL FIRE.
I'm cutting it up. I think we're just getting a little feedback from the team. Thank you.
Okay, so we are required to take a vote here, right? To officially introduce the ordinance? So if there are any other comments, I can hear those now or also a motion?
I, I just.
Yes, this is the first, this is just introducing the ordinance and allowing time for public comment and.
I just have one quick comment and then I can introduce the ordinance on a motion. I just think now we have budget season now come upon us in the next month or so. I think we need to really look at funding for vegetation management and get much more aggressive than we have in the past and go back to maybe the model we're using four years ago, where we were creating our own chipper days in Cordermadera, not relying so much on MWPA to provide those. But I think we need to get much more aggressive than we have in the past.
So this is not just to maintain town property? This is to help the community maintain its properties?
Correct. The model, I think we used four or five years ago. We actually had our time employee running that program, running crews around town, chipper days in neighborhoods. So they put, you know, dumpster out on Chapman. They put them up on Christmas tree hills. So it's more easily accessible for people to cut their own vegetation management and then just put in that dumpster. And then Mill Valley Refuge should pick it up. I just think we need to get much more aggressive, but we need the funding to do that.
Okay.
In particular, if we're going to net.
Process too.
Zone zero, where you're supposed to denude all around your house.
Yeah, the five-foot barrier, a five-foot.
You know, because.
Defensible space.
Dumpster costs 250 bucks.
Yeah. I get it. Okay, so do we have a motion regarding this particular ordinance?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and make the motion to introduce adding section 1502035 to chapter 1502, fire code designated moderate fire hazard severity zone in the town of Cordermadera's local responsibility area. I'll start then.
For a second, all right, second from Jim. Can we have a vote?
Councilmember Andrews?
Yes.
Councilmember Beckman?
Yes.
Councilmember Casissa?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
Mayor Ovazio?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries.
All right, thank you all for that. Thank you for standing in for your boss. Tell him we said thank you and hope he feels, hope Ruben feels better soon.
Yeah, I'll pass it along. Thank you for your time. Have a good night.
Okay, we'll move on then to our first business item tonight. Six A, discussion and possible adoption of resolution 19, 2025, rescinding resolution number B4, or 814, and adopting an updated list of trees recommended for street tree planting. And I know Phoebe's been working very hard on this. And I think we will hear from her. Adam, you want to, you want to set her up or is she ready to go?
They are.
Maybe just give her a chance to get settled in.
In a second, yeah.
Are you going for water?
Yeah.
I think we also have Kent Julin, our arborist, who's been helping our team with this project as well. And the audience for questions later.
Welcome. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Ovazio and council members. Tracy and I will be presenting this item on a recommended updated street tree list. All right, so updating the recommended street tree list is on staff's 2025 work plan for several reasons. One reason is that the Cordermadera Municipal Code references a list of recommended street trees that was adopted in 1966, which is now quite outdated and is no longer providing useful guidance for the public on which trees are appropriate for street tree planting. So staff felt it was past time to update this list. Staff also received a request from the Beautification Committee to have the town arborist recommend appropriate native trees for their street tree program, which is currently on hiatus. And so this list could be leveraged by their program, should it restart, as well as the town's sidewalk replacement program to provide as a resource to homeowners when trees need replacing through that program. And in general, an updated list supports property owners in selecting good street trees that are appropriate for conditions in Cordermadera, while not requiring that certain trees be planted. And this will in turn support the town's climate action plan goals related to tree planting on private and public land to increase carbon sequestration, improve air quality and provide natural cooling. So these are some of the preferred characteristics that staff were looking for in developing this street tree list. Not every tree on the list meets all of these characteristics, but we wanted to at least have options that, that met all of them. So the first on here is drought tolerant. All trees need water for the first one to two years after planting. But after that, we wanted trees that would survive on their own. We, of course, wanted trees that were not fire prone. So we only included fire-safe species that were approved by the fire department. And then as a street tree, we are looking for trees that were unlikely to damage infrastructure, including sidewalks, underground utilities and above-ground utilities. We also wanted trees that were low maintenance and wouldn't require a lot of pruning or cleaning or picking up messy fruit from property owners. Another characteristic we were looking for was adaptability. So trees that would do well here into the future and remain in Cordermadera for a long time, as well as trees that would grow quickly and sequester a lot of carbon upfront and help mitigate some of those climate impacts. As noted, we are also looking for Marin or California native species, as well as species that are pollinator-friendly, provide wildlife habitat. And then at least a few options that are tolerant of salty, wet conditions like you might find in bayside neighborhoods. So staff worked with Sadie Julin of Arbor Science Incorporated, which is the town's consulting arborist firm, to develop the list. And Sadie's not able to be here tonight, but we do have Kent Julin also from Arbor Science here to help answer any questions that might come up. And Arbor's goal in developing this list was to select species that would increase street tree diversity to build a resilient urban forest without having an overwhelming number of options for property owners to choose from. And in developing the list, she reviewed many existing street tree lists and recommended lists from other jurisdictions and programs, but also importantly, used her experience working in the area to recommend trees that are doing well in Cordermadera and similar areas in Marin and avoid trees that have been having issues such as pests, disease and branch failures. And following the development of the draft list, staff coordinated feedback with our Public Works Department, Central Marin Fire and the Beautification Committee, which will get into that feedback more later. So the proposed recommended street tree list includes 14 trees that were selected, again, to provide a diversity of physical characteristics and habitat features while meeting the preferred characteristics described previously. And we'll go over the list, which was included in attachment to the agenda packet in more detail in a moment, but just to give an overview of some of the features. Six of the species feature fall color. Six are evergreen and five have showy flowers. Six are tolerant of salty, wet conditions and that might be in the bayside neighborhoods, such as Marina Village and Mariner Cove. None of these species have messy fruit or require intensive pruning. All except four are drought tolerant and none are on the fire-safe Marin hazardous list. So they're all fire-safe species. And five are native to North America, three of which are native to California. And I'll pass it to Tracy to talk more about the native species and why we weren't able to include more than those three California natives on the list.
Thanks, Phoebe. Good evening, Mayor and council members. As Phoebe said, five trees on the list are native to North America. And of those five, three of those are native to California. And why not include more native trees? It really boils down to, many native trees are not well-suited to street tree planting. And on the slide here are some examples of those that we've considered. The coastal live oak, while it's a beautiful native tree, is sensitive and susceptible to sudden oak disease and fungi. It has the potential to damage sidewalks and the roadway. And it does grow very large. Another native species is the hollyleaf cherry, which wasn't recommended due to the large number of fruits that it produces. And it, it does have a need to be pruned into a tree form. The western red bud is native to Northern California, but it grows best in partial shade rather than the mostly sunny sidewalk plant or strip environment. It also requires irrigation during its lifetime through the summer. The little leaf palo verde has an open sparse canopy, which makes it undesirable as a street tree. It also does not do well in the Cordermadera climate. And similar to oak, the Catalina ironwood also grows very large and has destructive roots. So in short, some native species have challenges as street trees. Some are too sensitive, some are fire prone, some are too big or are not infrastructure friendly or, or some combination of all of these things. The recommended street tree list focuses on trees that grow well and are appropriate in the sunny, confined sidewalk plant or strip. The town's arborist has identified the five natives that we talked about that are good choices for Cordermadera as street trees. Native species could be more appropriate for planting in private property or larger public spaces where they can thrive in the right conditions. The formatted list does include some local resources for finding native species for private property, should homeowners wish to find recommended natives for their yard. The resources include the Water Smart Gardening Resource Center. That's provided by Marin Water. Another resource that we've included is Sonoma Marin Water Smart Plant Picker and the Fire Safe Marin, Fire Safe, Fire Smart Plants. Each of these online resources enables users to filter according to California natives. We also identified on the list clearly which trees are the native tree choices to enable the end user to select those more easily. And Phoebe already touched on some of the various considerations that went into the town arborist draft street tree list. And following the development of the draft list, we sought feedback from the Beautification Committee at several meetings throughout the winter. And the Beautification Committee provided feedback in several areas. They suggested several other native species to include on the list. The coastal live oak, which I said was too large. Unfortunately, manzanita is a fire-prone species. And the hollyleaf cherry, as I mentioned, has too much fruit. They did suggest the toyon, which we were able to include on the list, thankfully. The Beautification Committee also asked us to add the average height in the sidewalk condition to be included on the list. This data is not available, unfortunately, but what we were able to add is the mature height, which would be the maximum height that these species would attain. And in a sidewalk environment, it's not likely to get large as, as the mature height is, as listed. The committee recommended that we change the recommended planting size to a 15-gallon size, which is going to be more manageable for property owners to handle. They had some suggestions for us regarding, for the formatting of the list. One example was to highlight the native trees that I mentioned. But those are more obvious to the users. And then they had suggested resources for us to add related to native trees for planting in yards, as well as water smart plants and trees. The list was also reviewed and approved by Central Marin Fire Department, the fire inspector and the, the Central Marin Wildfire Hazard Mitigation Specialist, both have reviewed and approved of the list and the species that are included, as well as Department of Public Works has reviewed the list. As Phoebe said, none of these species are fire prone and none of them are damaging to infrastructure or, as we like to say, they're infrastructure friendly. The fire department also recommended some resources for us to add related to fire-safe Marin, add suggestions for adequate spacing and proximity to utilities. So we've added resources from PG&E as well. And all of these resources are incorporated into the formatted handout that will be made available to the public. That's attachment four to your staff report. The proposed list is intended to be a resource for property owners and developers. The proposed list is intended to be a resource for property owners and developers, town staff, and local groups, such as the Beautification Committee, to select species that really have been vetted by a certified arborist and are appropriate for the street tree conditions in Cordera specifically. The list would be relevant to Public Works' bike and pedestrian and street projects that involve new street trees. It would also be used as a resource for the sidewalk replacement program. Under our town sidewalk replacement program, Public Works requires a one-to-one replacement of a tree that's removed if the property owner wants to be eligible for the town's grant funds to remove the tree to replace it. So it would be a, this list would guide homeowners to something appropriate to replant in the sidewalk area. And lastly, the list would be a resource for the Beautification Committee's free street tree program, should they decide to restart that in the future. And of course, as Phoebe mentioned this before, that this is not required plantings. These are suggested or recommended. And if a homeowner wanted to plant something different and the conditions were right for that, they would be able to do that. Staff is recommending that the council adopt the resolution, draft resolution 192025, which would rescind the old 1966 list and adopt the updated street tree list. We have Kent Julin, the town's consulting arborist, here in the audience. If there are technical questions about the trees, their maintenance or growth habits. And Phoebe and I are here, we're going to pull up the list and just go through how it's organized. Obviously, if there are any questions that you have.
Sorry, I'm going to try resharing the list.
I guess I would just, I'll make my comment now while we're waiting, because I just wanted to acknowledge, this is one of those projects that starts off as something that's kind of like, oh, well, just update the street tree list. And before you know it, it balloons and grows and open ended into a much more involved project. And you can just see the thoroughness both Tracy and Phoebe put into this, asking all the right questions. I love it when, you know, you get our whole town staff involved, Public Works, CMFA, others, community groups. And so just want to thank both Phoebe and Tracy for that, the great work on this and the thoroughness with which they approached this project. So now you can go ahead. That was my filler.
Thank you, Adam. All right, so this is the recommended street tree list that was included as Exhibit A attached to the resolution. And so you can see that the list is organized on the side by the size of the tree. So there's a small, medium, and large category. And the large trees, as noted by the asterisks here, are recommended to be planted with a root barrier to encourage downward root growth. It won't damage sidewalks. And then along the top here, we have the common name, scientific name of the trees, as well as information to help homeowners in selecting one of the trees. So there's that maximum mature height, which, as Tracy mentioned, not all trees are going to reach this height in sidewalk conditions, but just so homeowners are aware of how tall they could get. There's a recommended planting area, annual growth, height in inches, whether the tree is drought tolerant or not, flowers, fruit, whether it's evergreen or deciduous, if deciduous, does it have fall color? And then the colors here, the blue ones are those that are salt tolerant. And then the highlighted in green are the California natives. So this is the sort of simple chart version of the list that we're asking council to adopt with the resolution. And then also included in the packet was a formatted list that is sort of all in one to provide to residents. So it has the sort of background about the list. It has the resources that were mentioned from PG&E and Fire Safe Marin about planting locations, fire safety, planting instructions, and then the set of resources around plants and trees for yards with those filtering for native species. And then the same list of trees, just formatted a little differently with pictures so that homeowners can get an idea of what these trees look like. And I think that's all for our presentation. Happy to answer questions.
Very nice job. I'll second what Adam said. I've watched how long it took for you to do this, and I heard about the meetings with the Beautification Committee. And I know you've had a lot of, a lot of input into this. And you're probably about to get just a little bit more. So can we start down here with you guys?
Yeah, mine are easy. Why did it take 70 years? No, I'm just kidding. The only other one, which I think I probably just answered myself, is that it looks like Marin Wildfire, MWPA, didn't get involved. There wasn't outreach to them. But then the flip side of that, it sounds like Todd Landell from Central Marin Fire, which is a resident expert on this stuff, reviewed it all. Okay, I'm good then. Thanks.
I have no questions. Thank you.
Jim or Rosa?
Yeah, I have one kind of just a gardener question. And then I have a question about the list. So in the yard plant list, I was wondering, is that also sorted by what kind of conditions it can, the plants can grow in, such as, you know, saltwater areas or rocky soil or what, what have you?
Are you asking about the Marin Water list specifically or just any of the?
There was the list that was Fire Smart. Oh, I think it's just Fire Smarts. Oh, wait a minute. Or maybe it's the other one, Marin Water Smart. No, that's the center. The Fire Safe Marin Fire Smart Plants. So that's the only one that has like plants for your yard in it, right? Okay, so I was wondering if that list also had, was sorted by what kind of conditions these particular plants, what kind of soil they can grow in? Or is it just whether or not they're fire safe?
Yeah, that's a good question. And Tracy has the site pulled up right now. And I do believe most of the sites provide additional information about the species beyond just whether they're, you know, fire safe or, or water smart, as the case may be.
Okay.
Can you go to the microphone, please?
And turn it on.
Thank you.
Thank you. The Fire Safe Marin Plant List doesn't specify what type of soil it can be planted in. It is organized, obviously, from Fire Smart to Fire Prone species. There is designations on there for California natives. And then the rest of the designations are going to be either ground cover, shrubs, or trees. That's kind of how they have that organized.
Okay, thank you. And then my other question is about root barriers. So is there a point at which they stop containing the root? Or is it too late by then, everything is pointed straight down? And I'm asking the resident arborist.
So root barriers are generally installed right when the tree is put in the ground. And then when the lateral roots reach out into the soil, they will run into the root barrier and plunge down or fall to the side. And the materials are usually made out of plastic, and they're, so they're long lasting. They don't stick above the soil. They're just flush with the top, you know, the mulch on the soil. So they kind of define the location of where the roots can grow. And then they'll continue in that way into the future. In cases where the roots dive under the root barrier, they're not problematic to service paving. Does that answer your?
That answers my question. I was just wondering if those little devils ever get out. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Arborist, you may want to stay up there. I have a couple more questions, but that's okay. You can pop back up. So two, two questions from me. I'm concerned about fruit. I know that our area of Chapman Park was actually called McHugh Orchard because we are such a strong fruit growing area. And so while I understand why you don't want to promote fruit for street trees, especially in, you know, certain areas, can we add viable producing fruit trees to the yard smart, the yard list of trees for people who are looking for trees in their own yard? I have 10 different fruit trees in my yard, and they almost all produce every year. And I'm, you know, in this day of concern about food security and all that, I don't want people to get the idea that we're saying, don't plant fruit trees. So can we, I know you've already done so much, but I can give you a list of all the trees that are doing great in my yard if you want to add those to the.
I think where we've directed people for plants and trees for yards is to really find other native plants that we aren't able to include on the street tree list, but might be viable for the yards. There may be some fruit trees on these lists. They're very extensive. But I think what you might be talking about is, you know, separately, a list for maybe public lands that may contain other, other trees. We, I don't, add something, Phoebe, I, we don't have a robust and complete list for things that we should be planting in their yards. I think what we're trying to do is direct them to something that is missing on the list. Not aware of something specific for fruit trees.
And if somebody wanted to plant fruit trees in the, in the strip, the tree strip, the, what are the, what's it called again? The place between the sidewalk and the street?
The devil's strip.
What's it called?
Well, in northeast Ohio, it's the devil's strip.
The devil's strip.
But some people call it a tree lawn.
What do we call it?
Public Works commonly refers to as the planter strip, sidewalk strip.
Okay. If somebody wanted to plant fruit trees there and take responsibility for the maintenance and all of that and cleaning up the fruit, would they be allowed to? Or is there a prohibition against fruit trees?
Not aware of a prohibition, but we do have some provisions of our municipal code that require vegetation in the planter strip or in the right of way to be maintained in safe conditions. So if we were causing slipping hazards, for instance, not being taken care of, then it would probably be something that we would contact the homeowner and tell them either to remove it or find a way to keep the fruit off of the sidewalk so it wasn't a hazard.
Does that happen in town? Has it happened that you know of? Are we dealing with problems related to fruit?
Not fruits specifically. Usually when we contact the homeowner to correct something in the sidewalk, planter strip is related to line of sight or, you know, not allowed a vehicle to save.
Okay. And then just a question about the Chinese elm. It's on your list. I have a Chinese elm, and it's huge. And it also doesn't lose its leaves. So I'm wondering, are there different kinds of Chinese elm? Stump, stump the arborist.
So within the species of Chinese elm, there, there's lots of diversity. Some lose their leaves entirely, while others are partially deciduous. So it's the same species. It's just, you know, like, we all look different sitting in this room, but we're from the same species.
So you could put a Chinese elm like mine in a, in a strip along there, and it would be totally inappropriate. I mean, it's really massive. So is there anything that tells people what kind of Chinese elm? It's recommended? Okay, so.
And then back to your question about fruit. I've seen some horror stories involving ginkgo, female ginkgo trees, and European olive trees that just litter the sidewalks and create slipping hazards.
Okay. So are there some that are worse than others? I mean, should we even look into that or just?
Well, I think, you know, an apple tree would be appropriate or a persimmon, like a fuyu persimmon would be nice. And something that people could walk by and steal the fruit as they're walking down the sidewalk. I think that would be nice.
Okay. I know there have been proposals by architects for community orchards in Cordera, but we can talk about that later. Okay. Oh, did you want to say something about community orchards? Are they part of the climate initiative, perhaps?
I was just going to note that the Sonoma Marin Water Saving Partnership Plant Picker, which is one of the resources we listed, does include some fruit trees on their list that they recommend, including the persimmon and a pomegranate. So there are, fruit trees aren't excluded from those lists, but we just focused on the, the water smart and fire safe plants.
Okay, good to know. All right, so do we have any comments from the?
I'd like to ask a question.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't, I thought, I didn't, I thought we came to you. Sorry.
Jim? I'm looking at Exhibit A. Is there any way you could put a code on there to show whether the tree is particularly liked by deer? Because I know that in terms of trying to run a garden, something you put down, the deer immediately eat, and other things they don't.
Added version of the list does include guidance on planting, which includes a recommendation to protect new trees from deer with fencing and, and stakes for the first one to two years.
Okay.
And I believe our arborist thought that would be sufficient time to protect the trees while they be, get established.
Yes, as soon as the leaves get up, you know, high enough away from the deer, then, then you're fine. But if you leave them unprotected, they will browse everything off of the trees.
Anything else, Jim? Okay, so we'll go to the public first here in the council chambers. Is there anyone who'd like to make a comment or ask any questions about street trees? And if none, seeing none, they'll look online? Is there anybody online?
No hands raised from attendees online and no email public comment for this item.
Okay, so we can bring it back to the council. And it looks like we are being asked to approve the item. Wait, I'm sorry, we're asked to adopt the resolution as requested. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to adopt Resolution 1925, rescinding Resolution Number 814 and adopting the updated list of trees recommended for street planting.
I'd love to second that, but before I do, I just wanted to thank our staff and the Beautification Committee that worked on this. I think this is outstanding work. Really appreciate how this is forward thinking in terms of making sure that we're selecting trees not just with an eye to our current climate, but with an eye to the more volatile climate that we, you know, see slowly coming on. So thank you for, for being forward thinking there. And I also really appreciate that you partnered with the Beautification Committee on this to make sure that this was something that was going to reinforce their ability to bring back a successful street tree program, which I know was widely loved and appreciated in the community. So that is very exciting. And the last thing I just wanted to point out as an example of how backwards our old list from 1966 was, that on that list is the liquid amber tree, which has destroyed so many linear feet of sidewalks in Cordera and caused literally thousands and thousands of dollars of damage to sidewalks that needed to be repaired. So it just shows you how, you know, how backwards we were at one point. So thank you very much, and I'm happy to second the motion to adopt.
And I would like to say that that, those liquid ambers, that was one of the big ideas of the Beautification Committee as recently as 1990. So it wasn't all the way back to 66 that we weren't yet aware of the impacts of some of our tree decisions. But I do think this sounds like we're really putting us on the right road or the right sidewalk. Okay, so do we have a second?
We did get a motion and a second, so I'll call the roll. Councilmember Andrews?
Yes.
Councilmember Beckman?
Yes.
Councilmember Casissa?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
Mayor Alazia?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries.
Okay, everybody, great job. It's eight o'clock, and we're ready for council reports. So we'll, whoa, 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 I'm so sorry. That was wishful thinking. All right, number 6B is consideration impossible action to authorize the town manager to, number one, accept a donation of $250,000 from age-friendly Cordera for operational support of the Cordera Intergenerational Center. And number two, And number two, enter into a donation agreement with age friendly Corder Medera for use of those funds over a period of five years. Recommendation is to approve the item as requested. We'll go to Adam for staff report.
Thank you.
So much, girls. Thank you for your work. Really appreciate it.
Thank you again, Mayor Ravazio. And you introduced that very well. So I'll just get right into some of the background. This was obviously one of the items that we had considered at the last meeting on April 15th, that at, at the time, no action was taken as there were still discussions ongoing between the town, Age Friendly Corder Medera and the Corder Medera Community Foundation as well, in terms of how to actually structure this agreement to get the funds, the donated funds from Age Friendly Corder Medera to the town for use as part of this intergenerational center, which we obviously discussed in detail at the last meeting. So over the course of the last few weeks, I think all parties ultimately found a better way of doing this and, and agreed to a different structure by which essentially there would be a one-time donation of $250,000 to the town. The Corder Medera Community Foundation would still be involved as a fiscal sponsor to essentially consummate the transaction of, of the donation from Age Friendly Corder Medera to the town, but would not be responsible for essentially dispersing the funds on a yearly basis over a five-year period. And that was sort of where I think was causing a little bit of a challenge there. So the same terms essentially that were already agreed to in the last grant agreement that was as part of the last pack, packet that you saw would still be in place. It would just be a direct donation agreement. I'm, hopefully I'm using the right terminology, Amy, but between Age Friendly and the town, and we're sort of working through the final details of exactly the language there. But for expediency, we're trying to actually just get authorization from the council or the town manager, myself, to enter into this agreement and move the process forward as there's many moving pieces still going on at this moment. So obviously this is really important funding where I will say the Age Friendly, I'm sorry, the our town council intergenerational center subcommittee recently met and started, got the draft of the first draft of the lease. We've started discussing that. Again, none of the lease would be signed until, in my view, until we get this agreement signed and approved by both parties, which I see Patty's here as well. So that's great. And that's the, how we intend to proceed and move forward on this matter. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions and by the council.
Anyone have questions?
We're being asked to authorize you to accept the donation of a quarter of a million dollars. Do we also need to authorize you to sign the lease? You know, once those details are worked out?
So the, we, we handled that at the last meeting. So I'm, we're good to go on that.
Okay, good.
Okay.
I just have a couple of quick questions. After the agreement gets signed, how's that going to be pushed out for public consumption, I want to say? Or to the public? And I'm going to couple that with, do we have a website? Usually we do when we have these projects on our website, we have like a, a different page, I want to say for the, for these type of projects. We haven't set that up yet. It may be a little bit premature.
No, I, I actually think that's a really good idea. And I think we should probably get a, a website up that we can put all the documents that, you know, we've, the council has seen that have been publicly available. As we go through this, we'll have plans and whatnot. Staff reports and show, showing the historic history of how we got here, those sorts of things. I think that's, we can certainly work, work on that going forward.
Okay, thanks. And just one point for clarification, again, for the public. The 250,000 would come in as, it goes into a restricted account. And then we could only pull out 50,000 a year towards the use of the center, correct?
Yeah, I think that, that's the, essentially the framework we're working under. And so, yeah, there, exactly. It would be 50,000 a year. I think we're working on the dates exactly of how that year is calendared, so to speak, but yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Eli? Down here, questions?
Just on that idea of the 50,000 a year, is there any possibility that being restricted that way could, you know, be a problem? You know? The idea that maybe in the first year, you might need a little bit more because you're getting started or, I mean, I don't know if it meant, if you have a pool of money. I don't know if should be necessarily.
Well, I would say, I, I don't, I think certainly we'll, we'll budget this, the first year with, with that in mind, that we're going to have additional costs. And, and so I think I don't see really a problem. There is some administration involved, but that was really the discussion we've had with Age Friendly Corder Medera in order to make this happen. And so I think that was really important. I think we've are fine with that idea to make sure that we're, we're not only accepting the money over a course of five years and, or using it over five years, but there's reporting requirements as well. On a yearly basis, there's meetings going to happen at the Park and Rec Commission to review the programming, things like that. We're all part of the discussions we had over the course of several weeks, if not a, you know, a couple of months. So I think we're all comfortable with, with the approach.
Good. And I understand that it will be held in an interest-bearing account? So there will be a separate? Separate accounting for this? I heard that somewhere.
Yes, I think, you know, Age, Age Friendly has set conditions for the use of the funding and we're respecting those conditions and those will be in the agreement. And I think the latest request was to hold, the, the money, of course, would be held in a separate account. We'd be accounting for it separately, reporting annually on, on the use of the money. And, but I think they would like it to be held in an interest-bearing account and have the interest provided back to them. And I think that's an acceptable condition, given the gift is 250,000. So.
Are there any other questions about this from council? Well, we need to, we need to open it up to the public first to see if there's any comments in the room or online. Not seeing any in the room. I'm seeing Patty Stolier, who I would like to thank for her wonderful patience and commitment to this and working through all the details. It's been been a good road.
I just wanted to first thank you for your kind words, but I wanted to address Rosa's question. And the money that is coming from the grant from Age Friendly is for instructors and supplies. So it's not like if we find out that we need more janitorial or we need more insurance or something like that, it's going to strap this arrangement. So is that your understanding too, Adam?
Well, I think the specific provision is, is that's the, the first use of the funds is for that. And then there's a consideration after that, if there's funds remaining to use it for operational expenses.
Correct. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. And there were no, nobody in line to make a comment online?
Correct. Three attendees, their hands are not raised and no email public comment for this item.
Okay. So do we have a motion to approve this item?
I think you need your mic on. Sorry.
I'd like to make a motion to approve, accept the donation of quarter of a million dollars on behalf of Age Friend. This is what, Age Friendly Corder?
Age Friendly Corder Medera. Yep.
Second. Okay. Councilmember Andrews?
Yo.
Councilmember Beckman?
Yes.
Councilmember Casissa?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
Mayor Ravazio?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries.
Okay. Thank you all very much. Now moving on to council reports, starting with our town manager.
Great, thank you. So I wanted to give you a brief update on where we are with this year's swim program. Sonoma Aquatics, as you know, we've been partners with them the last two years with increasing success. This year is a little bit different of a program because Redwood Pool is being replastered. So it'll be closed from mid-June to early August. I think the second week in August around there. So I've been trying to get Sonoma Aquatics to really continue to provide a program this year because I think it's important and I think they think it's as well important to just keep some of the momentum and keep their, their program in town this year. But it, but what we came up with was a modified schedule, which is only going to be on Sundays. And it's going to only really provide the free swim lessons for low-income individuals and families. And provide the aqua aerobics classes as well, which are the two specialized classes, both for youth and seniors that we've seen success for, with in the past. This has come together relatively recently because of the working with the, the modified schedule. But I just want to let you know, so I want to, this is obviously reduced cost overall. It's about $18,000. It will start at the end of May. And then it will continue after the closure in August through, up and through into November, I think the first week or so in November. And it will be on, on Sundays as well. And so this is, obviously this is something that we've budgeted for in our budget the last, this last, this fiscal year. And so I intend to just move this forward. I just want to make sure the council was aware of this. Advertising will come out relatively soon. I think in the next couple of days. And just wanted to make sure the council was aware of that happening again this year, but in a modified format and only on these Sundays. And let's see, one other update I would like to let you know, I did talk to Ann Richmond at TAM. A couple of big changes happening with 101. One is those metering lights that have been installed and have been in place for almost five years. Those will actually be turned on on our northbound on-ramp, the one closest to Macy's, that diagonal. That's the only one, but that will be in June at some point. I think it's middle June, late June. I did raise the question of like, is this really a good idea right now, given, you know, we may be in construction a year from now. And so she's, she's looking into that and sort of asking that question herself of the rest of the team. That combined with the change in the commute hours, which I don't know if you've heard about, but they're actually trying to now combine Sonoma's, sorry, not commute hours, the carpool lane hours. Sonoma and Marin have had different hours. I know that very well because I, I experience it pretty much every day in terms of what carpool lane hours exist. And so they've, in an effort to sort of as the narrows between Nevada and Petaluma get finished, turn it into a consistent carpool lane hours that they're going to be using three to seven PM, which is a more extended time period. The metering is intended to obviously help meet cars out in a more consistent way to try to deal with traffic, but they are expecting more backups as a result of the carpool lane hour change, which means that it will be less users in those lanes. And I guess the metering was, is intended to help that with, but it may create more backups onto Redwood Highway or Old Redwood Highway or our local roads. And finally, the other thing that I think is, I asked the question to Ann about, I thought at some point these stickers for the EVs or certain vehicles are going to go away. And apparently that's going away as well in September. So you're going to add more vehicles to the regular lanes and not the carpool lanes. I, I don't know the details in, in terms of the stickers. I will find out, but just some major changes. I asked for some information that we can certainly get out to our community and to everybody. So once we get that, I will be asking Mike and to get that on our newsletters and whatnot. So just, you know, obviously some are, hopefully we have usually less local traffic, but it, you know, we're going to see some effects from that. So just want to let the council know. I did a couple of other just dates to remember. I think unfortunately, well, we have an appeal hearing on May 14th at 6:30. The unfortunate part was that we had already scheduled the Lower Christmas Tree Hill Complete Streets and Evacuation Improvement Workshop Number Two at the same, exact same time. So they're both happening at the same time that evening. But I think nonetheless, just those two dates, I just wanted to mention, those are upcoming public meetings to be aware. And with that, I the reports I have for tonight.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions for Adam? I have one. Jim, you do?
I was just going to make a comment that the Diamond Lane hours. One, it's shifting in Marin, so it's both directions. So it's in the morning, it's five to 10, both directions. And in the evening, it's three to seven, both directions, which is.
Just one way.
She's shaking her head over.
Four thirty to seven.
Four to seven thirty or something.
So not everybody seems to understand why they're doing all these changes, but maybe we can get to that. But I have a question first about.
The council, I will say it's a couch, it's not TAM making these choices. It's, it's.
Okay. I have a question, just if I could go back to the swim program real quickly. What are the hours on the Sundays? And then how many Sundays is it? If you could.
So I think 12:30 to three. So it's, it's midday. And then the, I think there's 17 or 18 weeks starting in, in end of May.
How many Sundays are included in the plan?
Seventeen or eighteen.
Seventeen or eighteen Sundays?
Yeah.
But it goes all the way through November?
Yeah. Into November.
And that is community swim as well. It's not just free lessons and aerobics, right? It means that the community can come in and swim a lap or two?
No, my understanding is, is it's aqua aerobics and the, and the free swim classes.
So can we all, can we consider making that open to the community?
I think the, the issue with that, as I understand it, is once they open it up for public to use for free swim lessons, then there's, rent will be charged by the school district. So right now, because it's limited to the two types of activities that we've discussed, essentially the school district is providing a $4,000.
Waiver for the community to use its own pool.
Waiver.
So I really would like us to pursue that and I'm happy to just take that on. And I don't mean open community swim, but lap, lap swimming during those hours would still be a more regimented, you know, people come into swim laps, they're not, we don't have to give extra supervision for kids playing with floaties or, or, or anything like that. So I did speak to Jeremy today and I could, I could just follow up and see if we could include that.
We can, we can discuss that offline. Yeah.
All right, great.
And I, and one other thing I should mention also, there was another grant from Giving Marin of over a thousand dollars as well to the program.
From who?
Giving, Giving Marin, I guess, philanthropic organization.
Okay. Thank you. Now, does anyone want to go back and talk about the traffic changes? Is there any questions for Adam on that? Are we allowed to do that?
It's not.
Not really. Okay, we won't.
We'll go to the website.
We'll go poke around. Okay. So. We'll take them offline. All right. So does anybody, do we want to go next to Fred for council reports?
Yeah, hopefully I have the right date. 3/28, 10 MCC, MCC meeting, which was here. I won't steal Pat's thunder, so I'll let her get in.
Go ahead.
No, I thought it was great, it was a great event, by the way. Great food. I think the presentation from the kids went really well. So I just think it went, it was a great event. Five, one, I attended Ross Valley Paramedic Authority. It's budget season, so all these agencies are going to have budgets. So we approved or looked at the first draft of the budget. There's also, I've previously mentioned, there was a deployment study done by City Gate that created two different working groups, one I'm chairing, which has to do with the JPA and also looking at a funding formula. Hopefully it will be making some progress late June or so. The chiefs are supposed to be getting some time in mid-June together on that. So hopefully we made progress on that. Five four, one of my favorite events, I attended Touch Trucks, which was over and volunteered at it, which was I got to set up the trucks. It was pretty cool. That was a fundraiser for the Larchburg Library Foundation. It was a great event. Tons of kids. They love climbing on that stuff. Five five, attended Marin Transit Board Meeting. Again, we did had drafted our budget. That budget's almost 61 million in revenue. We also agreed to purchase two EB vans that will be used. And we also are going to pilot additional shuttles out in West Marin. That'll hit Point Reyes and Bolinas and Stinson Beach out there also. And then since the last meeting, we've been meeting every Wednesday. The Intergenerational Center Ad Hoc Committee Meeting, a group which is myself, Pat and Adam and the Adam mentioned this before, we got a draft lease, so we went through that yesterday, actually. That'll go to our city attorney insurance. See if there's any more changes and then we'll be back and forth on that. So we're making progress on it. Thanks.
Thank you, Fred. Who's next? Eli?
Sure thing. All right, buckle up. April 16th, attended the Zonda meets ribbon cutting, which was fantastic. April 17th, had a Central Marin Sanitation Agency Ad Hoc Committee Meeting, continuing to look at this proposed sort of soft consolidation with San Rafael Sanitation District. Also, April 17th in the evening, had an MCE Board Meeting where we approved our annual budget. That's like a $700 million agency. So I feel like MCE oftentimes flies under the radar, but that is the the local public clean energy company of which the vast majority of our constituents are customers. April 19th, we had our first ever volunteer fair in Corder Madera. It was a huge success. Thank you, Rebecca and team for putting that on. Great turnout, and I think people really enjoyed the experience. So that was wonderful. Later that day, I attended the MCCC, which is the Marin County Bicycle Coalition Anniversary Celebration. On April 22, I participated in a wastewater panel put on by Water Now Alliance, and I talked about the work that we're doing on water recycling at Central Marin Sanitation Agency, which is exciting. Later that day, attended the State of the Town Luncheon, which I will let the mayor talk about. From April 23rd to April 25th, I was in Sacramento for the Cal Cities Leaders Summit. We had meetings with our legislators, who are Assembly Member Damon Connolly and Senator Mike McGuire. We were able to talk with them about a number of priority bills that are under consideration this year that would affect cities like Corder Madera. We also had a press rally on the Capitol Lawn where we just encouraged the legislature to make sure that they're funding programs that cities and our constituents rely on. From April 28th to April 30th, I was at the Cal CCA Conference in Irvine and learned learned about regional markets. Basically, California and a handful of other Western states are working on setting up regional energy markets. Well, I guess that's already in effect, but are further developing these regional energy markets, which will hopefully make energy for all of us more reliable and cheaper. Also learned about the PCIA, which is basically a a fee that PG&E has convinced the state government to slap on to MCE customers. And you know, and and other customers who leave the service of investor owned utilities. So that was fascinating to learn about. Almost done here. April 30th, attended the MCCMC meeting right here. And on May 5, excuse me, May 1, had a Central Marin Sanitation Agency Finance Committee Meeting. That is all. Thank you.
That is all, really? Very, very industrious there. Okay, so moving down this end of the table, either?
Okay. Starting with the volunteer fair on 4/19. Sorry, didn't hit it hard enough. Starting with the volunteer fair on 4/19, which was a great event, got to talk to a lot of people from the town band and happy to report that we now have a cellist who has volunteered in the town band. And there's some things getting underway with them. They want to have a presence on the town website and on the town. What's that? Next door to recruit more people to join the band and also, as I put it, they need some roadies because they could use some help moving instruments back and forth. On 4/22, attended the State of the Town and happy to report that the State of the Town is good. And then on 4/27, I had the honor of stepping in for Pat to attend the Meet Your Mayor Gathering. It was about 75 young people from all the cities in Marin who had joined by also mayors and vice mayors who were also on the panel. And it was really both you know, heartwarming and heartbreaking to hear the things that, you know, young people are really concerned about these days. And it's makes me think that, you know, we as the prior generation, we kind of dropped the ball and we have a lot of work to do because we left quite a mess for them. So that was both very motivating and very you know, it helped us focus some energies. Also, on 4/30, of course, MCCMC right here, our town hall was very much a very impressive place for everyone. They were probably blown blown away. And yes, the food was incredible. And I'm wondering, Rebecca, have you gotten rid of all the extra yet? It was it was quite a spread. And then on 5/1, I remotely attended the RVPA meeting, which Fred is I'm the alternate, but I like to know what's going on. So it was mostly having to do with the budget. So that's all I got.
Been a busy month for many of us, Jim.
Well, I attended the the meetings with my fellow councilpeople, which is volunteer lunch, State of the Town, MC, whatever the initials are. Wildfire did not meet this month. The TAM did meet. Adam has told you about the chief change, which is the adjustment of the commute hours. Which are home on Diamond Lane Hours. And basically, it will probably be implemented this summer when the Narrows project is completed. And Caltrans will be able to say that our commute hours are in sync with all the bridges. Reason why they selected those particular hours. So that's it.
Okay, so everybody's already stolen all my thunder, so I'm not going to repeat everything, but I do want to say Rebecca has really become like a special events pro. She's just able to put these events together. The volunteer fair was really well done, very thorough planning to get all of those organizations there. And I found that the most amazing thing was the way all the people from all the organizations were walking around and getting to know the people from the other organizations. So even if nobody else had walked into that hall, I think it would have been productive. And then there were people walking in every few minutes saying, what can I do? How can I help an Adam or Eli? So everybody was there to greet them and then send them off to the right table. So it really was a really productive feeling day.
I can also just quickly acknowledge also Tim, Tim Berry has been helpful in setting a lot of this up as well. And and Lorena has been at these events too. So I just want to acknowledge them as well. Thank you.
And a big shout out to the Chamber of Commerce for bringing back State of the Town. This is one of the only events in town that actually predates Julie Kritzberger. She doesn't even know how it got started. So it's been going on for a really long time. Yesterday, I attended MCE on behalf of Eli, and there was a major discussion about this regional power partnership that they're looking to get us into where they say that Californians, just the MCE customers will save over $800 million if we are able to get into a buying group with some other Western states. I heard today from the Chamber that Marin County Hotel revenues are up 19% over last year, which is really surprising, especially because travel is down. And we're expecting travel to be down this summer. So the Chamber is very concerned about their TOT. But on the other hand, I said, well, if nobody's traveling, that means there's more people staying close to home. So maybe we can push staycations and things like that in Marin. They were talking about incentivizing hotel development. Our Best Western Inn may not always be a hotel, so and that hotel is like the third leg of the stool, you know, the business, the hotels, and I can't remember what the third one was, but that we really need hotels in order to get the tax refunds or the tax revenues that we're looking for. And then lastly, on the MCCMC thing, Rebecca, outstanding work again. She got into the details with all of the restaurants. Our our community restaurants supported us so much, we said, we want to do a taste of Corder Madera. So Pig in a Pickle, Zonda, Zita, or Quito's Tacos, Tub Tim, Mejo's, all came up with really wonderful spreads and we were able to show them off as Corder Madera restaurants and they were really thrilled to have that exposure to other elected officials throughout Marin, which should help us bring in more tax revenue. So it all goes together. And what's going to happen next with regard to the teens who gave a presentation on how they wanted stronger smoking ordinances, especially those that intentionally target younger people in their marketing. I'm hoping I've contacted Eli Hill about doing a special committee from within MCCM where one person from each town would serve to help figure out how we can do this together instead of having 11 different ordinances, but have one county ordinance and Derek Johnson from the county was there and very much supportive of it. So hopefully there'll be some follow up coming on that. And I think that's it. Right, so we can move on to number eight, discussion of the draft agenda for upcoming town council meeting.
Just one quick question. We're going to have e-bike ordinance at our next meeting? Okay, thanks.
Okay, anything else? So if not, I would like to adjourn tonight in memory of the four students from Archie Williams High School that were lost in that horrific accident on April 19. And hope the families find peace and light somehow through their heartbreak. With that, we are adjourned.